If you'd be in, welcome to the King Philip School Committee meeting on August 28th. I'm coming to you from the Middle School Library today. We will start up at what all committee members, we'll start with Mr. Wehman.
Greg Wehman, Plainville.
Charles Shaw, Plundale.
Mark Waskin.
Jim Leehan, Doffe.
Bruce Keats, Plundale.
Aaron Greeney, Rentham.
Joe Ryan, Rentham.
Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity to begin our meeting for public comment, but first let me recognize the delegation we have here this evening. We of course have our superintendent, Rich, and welcome to your first school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Hopefully one of many to come. And so we're always pleased to have you here. Billson is with us this evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wehman, may I ask, Plundale, we have no microphones here.
We do not.
Do we have?
Can you pick us up, Andrew? Okay.
Talk as loudly as you can, I guess. This is it.
We'll just, yeah, I can't hear you, so speak louder.
What?
We have Mr. Boyce with us this evening as well. Lisa Boy is with us, Mr. Shawissey, and of course, Mrs. Zinn, who never misses a meeting, and Vanessa Pettit, we're always so happy to have you here for this this evening. This is an opportunity for public comment, I understand where you have one. It is, if I am this correct, Mr. Bill LaPlante, is that right?
Correct.
Quickly, just to go over, sir, when you come up, if you give us your name, town that you're from, and your relationship to the school. Public comments, I think you are the only one this evening, so it is limited to three minutes. And we ask that there be nothing specifically to address to any individual in the course of the meeting.
Sure.
You're welcome. Welcome to have you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Bill LaPlante, Plundale, Mass, here to represent my son, Andrew LaPlante, and the KP football team. Boys came back from camp and there's a rumor that the KP logo is going to be removed from the football helmet, the, the spears on the side. And they said that this is coming from a school committee meeting. I just want to confirm, is that accurate?
Well, it isn't the policy enforcing the school committee to respond to public comment. How do you want to handle that, sir?
I can, I can comment here on my superintendent's update.
Apologize for that, I should have mentioned that in the opening remarks, but we were not in a position to respond to public comment, it's your opportunity to address us, but it's not our opportunity to respond to that in the course of the meeting, but if you can deal with that during the course of your meeting.
I don't, I mean, I don't have what I would want to have with me to speak properly on it, but I can talk to it for certain, I'll answer.
If not, we can get a direct response right after you.
So, your question was, if, if...
Feel free, sir.
What is the...
The football logo on the helmet is the Warrior arrows.
Right.
And there's stickers that apply to the helmets. And this is a tradition that's been going on for, you know, 25 years. And it's something the boys look forward to, and as sophomores, I awarded the Warriors, they put the stickers on the helmet, and they said, they heard that the, that that's not going to be allowed this year. And I wanted to know, and other parents also want to know, how this decision was made, and how it came about, so if it actually came about.
So, if, if, I may clarify, the question is, what is the logo on the helmets?
It's, uh, Spears.
You're asking if it's going to be retained or replaced?
Correct.
Thank you. We'll, we'll do our best to try and do it during the course of the meeting, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. You have the consent agenda in front of you, I think the warrant has been signed. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at the draft minutes? Any changes, alterations, comments? We'll have, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are, no executive session minutes to approve, and now one of our favorite times. Aiden, welcome, nice to have you with us.
Thanks. Nice to be here, thank you for having me, everyone. I wanted to start off today by taking the opportunity to say that as the whole school year has not yet begun, and Addison couldn't be here to join me tonight, I wanted to take the opportunity, without a formal report, to summarize some of the events that have happened, and been going on behind the scenes at the school, and that are upcoming also in the district. So, to begin, fall sports registration has closed, and tryouts have been completed, and practices are now expected to begin, and KP students' families are looking forward to another outstanding year of performance on behalf of the athletics team. The marching band has also begun its season with pre and post sessions at the high school, after spending a week at Camp Madupini in Naples, Maine, also where the football team stayed and trained two weeks prior. KP Care has held their annual Gillies House Summer Fest yesterday, August 27th, at the Rentham Developmental Center, from 12 to 6 p.m. This family sober event has been a great success, and something that's been much looked forward to by the community in past years, and students were very excited to have the opportunity to serve their community again. They had events that included face painting, crafts, they had various food beverages, including snow cones, popcorn, cotton candy, and more. KP Care is also holding a school supply drive for those families who may be in need, from the 23rd to the 31st of August, there was supply that is placed in the main lobby and office of the high school. Secondly, student council has been in the process of planning freshman orientation over the past two months, which will occur in two days, on Wednesday, the 30th, at the high school, in two sessions, from 10 a.m. to noon, and from 1 until 3 p.m. Incoming students and freshmen will have the opportunity to partake in a tour of the school, a scavenger hunt, they'll see a presentation in the auditorium, and they'll attend a club fair in the fieldhouse. All students will leave orientation with either an ice cream or a popsicle, as well as a green floater with the brochure of information regarding KP's clubs and organizations, school map and notebooks courtesy of Healthy KP. And speaking of Healthy KP, they will be holding a multi-town vigil for overdose awareness day in honor of the 2,357 Massachusetts residents who passed away due to overdoses in 2022. One will be at the Rentham Town Common at noon, and the other at the Norfolk Town Common at 1 p.m., both of which will occur on August, Thursday, on Thursday, August 31st. KP Care will also be holding a back-to-school social for parents and for students, which will occur that same night, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the middle school. It will include their hidden in plain sight exhibit, and a meet and greet opportunity with Principal Bottomley and new superintendent, Dr. Drole. There will be fun activities for students, including various lawn games and some social icebreakers. DECA is holding their 12th annual parent and member orientation night in the high school auditorium on September 5th at 6 p.m. Attendees will meet Mr. Dow, the program facilitator, and an overview of the DECA program in the upcoming year. On Friday, September 8th, the varsity football team will play wall pole in their first season of the game, here at 7 p.m. at the high school on our home turf. There will be a pre-tailgate, and high school administrators will participate in a meet and greet from 6 to 7 p.m. That same night after the football game, Healthy KP will be hosting its fifth quarter event at the high school, which will include various attractions, such as an inflatable obstacle course, a dunk tank, a photo booth, music, crafting, and other attractions. Food and beverages will also be served. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you. And thank you again for having me.
Always a pleasure to have you. We'll look, we'll look forward to the September 11th report, after you've had four days of school. Thank you, Aiden, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Sure. Thank you very much. So, I just have a superintendent's report, I'll try to do this at every meeting, I can share this with you electronically, I was just working on it shortly before the meetings, electronically I have some links, and I'll share it with the school committee, just with different press releases and things like that, so I'll pass it out now, and I'll send you a hard copy electronically, Aiden can have one too. I just wanted to start by doing, if we could just do a moment of silence. First, a moment of silence for Connor Riley. Connor Riley was a remarkable young man, and with his family and our staff's support, his life exceeded expectations, and he inspired so many. I got to meet his parents, and I just wanted to say our thoughts go out especially to Connor's family, his dad, Bill, who's a teacher in the Norfolk Public Schools. I also just wanted to do a moment of silence for Malia Jashik. I've gotten to learn about Malia as well, about how she was brave, pushed herself with curiosity, openness, tenacious, and also compassionate, and like Connor, she served as an inspiration to others, and her life ended too soon. So, with hope, optimism, and confidence, her last words were, "I've got this," and I just think that that speaks, speaks to Malia. Thank you. I wanted to share some other things about the district, so in your handout there, I mentioned, August 16th through 18th, we facilitated a summer behavior institute here in this library for middle and base school teachers interested in learning from a renowned behavior expert, that was a restorative practices training. Her name was Polly Bath, she's widely recognized as an expert across New England and the nation, and she consults and trains administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals on how to manage and change difficult school behavior. And she's gained her reputation most especially by teaching educators how to change difficult behaviors that have been most resistant to change. So, she's really an expert in working with students that exhibit challenging behaviors, and her strategies are inclusive for either regular education or special education. I got to spend an hour or two, along with Dr. Gilson and some of our teachers, and the feedback was very positive, and it was very helpful to our 30 or so teachers who attended during the summer. I wanted to let you know tomorrow, and Wednesday, is our new faculty and staff orientation, the 29th and 30th. We're going to welcome a group of enthusiastic new teachers and teacher assistants to King Philip. We're going to work to support them to their fullest, to support our students, of course, across our three towns. I give credit to Dr. Gilson next to me, she's leading the new teacher-staff orientation, which includes two full days of training, and also it will be a year-long learning, and new teachers get a mentor, a veteran teacher from the district to assist them. Aiden, you stole my thunder with the back-to-school social, just saying, August 30th, that will be sponsored by the Prevention Coalition, hosting the back-to-school social. High school principal, Bottomley, myself will be there if anyone wants to meet us, and there's many good things going on, the fieldhouse door rises for students, Mario Kart Tournament, obstacle course, parents who will engage in a hidden in plain sight exhibit, talk about, learn about social hosting laws, wellness resources, and there's a meal towards the end to kick off Families' Meals Matter Month, we hope to see many people there. This Thursday, August 31st, is our district leadership team will meet for a full day, we're focusing on preparing for the arrival of staff next Tuesday, students next Wednesday, which we're very excited for. This is going to be our third full day together as a leadership team, we had two previous days earlier in the summer, and linked, new to our leadership team will be Karen Arsharimbo, high school assistant principal, and Sean Connor's middle school assistant principal. We sent press releases out announcing the two of their hires within the past week or so, and that, when I send this to you electronically, you'll see the links. I know next Massachusetts Teacher of the Year semifinalist, high school teacher Erin Nolino. I know Mr. Zinni already acknowledged her at a previous meeting, but I wanted to acknowledge her again, as her plaque has arrived, and Ms. Nolino is very busy, and she had conflicts in her schedule for this and the next school committee meeting, she could not attend in person, so tonight I just wanted to honor her, and perhaps Mr. Wehman can present the plaque to Ms. Nolino on behalf of the school committee Tuesday morning in the video of the certification, so her plaque will arrive if anyone wants to see it, and congratulations again to her, I look forward to meeting her. I wanted to share that King Philip High School area has been designated as a school zone officially, so at June, on the June 20th, Rentham Board Selective Meeting, the Rentham Board voted unanimously to designate the area around King Philip Regional High School as a school zone, in line with the state guidelines. This was a required step needed for a grant by Joe Zoner, our facilities manager, I'm not sure if Joe is still here, he helped do the walkthroughs tonight, and this makes the area around our high school more safe for staff and students. This grant is funded by the Massachusetts Safer Schools and Communities Initiative, it's going to pay for two speed-reducing signs, which will be installed in the fall, it tells you your speed, and I believe in to slow down if you're going too fast, and then our KP school department and the facilities staff will put up signs preceding that, school zone, things like that, so that's going to be an improvement out of our high school, especially around the kind of dangerous curve outside of the high school.
Question? Go. Does that include the middle school?
No, the grant was just for the high school, so we've actually applied for, through Mass Safe Schools Initiatives, a number of different things to improve school safety, they have limited grant money, but I can find out more through Mr. Zoner, but I do not believe this one includes the middle school, just the high school with the speed-reducing signs.
Would it be beneficial for Norfolk to designate that school?
It could be, I think the high school's the priority, and I'll look into what is needed if we were to get the same grant for the middle school, with the speed-reducing signs outside the middle school, because although it's not as dangerous, I'm stretching, we don't have as many student drivers, it is still an area that, you know, we could reinforce people slowing down down at the middle school, that's all there is to it.
We have new drivers, 16 years old there.
At the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah, not too many, but I did have to sit back a number of times. Wanted to reiterate, in case you haven't heard, free lunch for all students, breakfast too. Governor Haley approved permanent free school meals for all students, we've updated the meals information on the website, and the free and reduced lunch application has also been updated. It is still important for families to fill out the free and reduced lunch form at the beginning of each year, this does directly tie into our grant funding for Title I, so it's still important for people to fill out that application, but it's, this is very positive news, and it should be for years to come as well. I believe Massachusetts is one of only six or seven states that, that is having free lunch.
So, everybody gets free lunch?
Yes, everyone, breakfast as well. Anyone who wants it, free lunch. Teacher and staff convocation next Tuesday morning, I'm looking forward to giving my welcome back presentation and message to our entire KP staff next Tuesday morning, September 5th, as our educators return full-time for the 23-24 school year. I am looking forward to not just introducing myself, but meeting many educators I haven't had a chance to meet yet. And besides myself, Mr. Gentile, the Teachers Association President will speak, I'll speak, and then Mr. Wehman, as the school committee chair, will address the staff as well. This will be held in King Philip High School Auditorium at 8 a.m., those are freshmen, it's around 7:30. So, if any school committee members want to attend at 8 a.m. in the auditorium next Tuesday, welcome, welcome to come. And that concludes the superintendent's update for this week. One thing I, and I don't know if you want to comment, as well as the school committee, typically, we don't respond to public comment, but I will say that, I have communicated with the high school principal and the athletic director, as they've been asking me about logos and things like that, so I'm learning a lot about the district. What I did learn is that during the September 2022 school committee meeting, the school committee unanimously voted to use the interlocking KP logo as, on all KP district or Warrior-related branding materials. So, as a result of this, any and all branded materials purchased from then on by the school, district, or sports teams should reflect that school committee vote, with the interlocking KP as the official logo. So, that's what I've learned about it, you know, in terms of if others stray from that with other teams and things like that, that could happen, but that's what I've learned, and that's what I've communicated with, with the high school, those that were around.
Was, was that something that was...
Sir, this is not a Q and A, but I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting, if you want to. That's what I...
Does anyone have any further, I was trying to recollect that meeting, and the KP logo, the interlocking KP, had been the unofficial official logo of KP for many years, there hadn't been any new material printed that didn't bear that logo, and that was part of the logic as to why we agreed that we would formalize what had been a policy for, I think, three or four years. You may remember, Barbara, it had been longer than that, but I know it was at least three or four years that it had been the official KP logo, unofficial official KP logo, so we voted to formalize that. It wasn't any discussion that I recall about existing equipment, sports equipment, but certainly the memo that I just, was shared with me just now was logical, based on that vote. Mark, anyone has a different recollection? Feel free.
I don't have a different recollection, and this is admittedly awkward, because we can't interact with the community. I would just name that the way I heard the question might not have been about the logo per se, but the stickers that are added on to the helmet that are given for good plays, at least that's how I understand in football, when a, no?
Yeah, no, the... So, I think my understanding is each year, the high school football team gets a new sticker decal for helmet, and so each year it changes, or maybe not, I'm not sure, so as it's, so, and for, for me coming in, talking to the previous superintendent, my education was that, as of that school committee meeting, just moving forward, anything new that would be purchased or displayed or branded would be the interlocking KP, so I'm trying to stick to that.
We are going to go back and replace everything.
Correct. So, there would be no replacing of anything, but it would be phased out as new things that are purchased have the interlocking KP, so that's what I've learned. And one other thing, not officially in the update, I'll share, is that I'm available to talk, to talk to anyone as the new superintendent, so if you want to stick around, I'll talk to you after the meeting, I'll be there Wednesday night if anyone wants to talk, things like that. Also, through Mr. Wehman, I'll update the committee, based on our retreat, there was a question about public participation policy, so through Ms. Pettit, I did get guidance from legal about one small thing to change in our public participation policy, so I'll bring that forward to the committee through Mr. Wehman, probably me to set the next school committee meeting in German, it's just my language tweaking based on state law. So, that concludes my superintendent's update, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'll share this with you electronically, and again, I'm just excited to be here and to get started, and to meet as many people as possible in the district, and we're excited for school to start. We were at the high school doing the walkthroughs, and seeing the sports teams, students back, filling their buildings with energy, I'll acknowledge our staff that's been working over the summer, custodial staff, counselors, school secretaries doing registrations, everything with student scheduling, so I just want to acknowledge everyone.
Comments, questions, say?
Jim Wehman, if I may, this is, this is our first really public meeting with our new superintendent, and one said that we're working together cooperatively, and, and appreciative of everything, so that we're, it's a new era for us.
Absolutely, I'm excited to be here, and hope to be here for you, so, thank you.
And we are awesome, so thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Oh, the other, the other thing is, oh, go ahead, Mr. Waskin.
I apologize that you did not hear the walkthroughs, but I am curious how the media renovation is going, and if you can help me out about that.
Sure.
My son, who will be a senior, will be here.
Yes, so I wish we were there tonight instead of here. So, this meeting and the September 11th meeting will be here. Ms. Bottomley, the new high school principal's optimistic that next Tuesday, she'll be able to have her faculty meet, her first big faculty meeting there.
That's a first thing.
But, um, I applaud her. Having been through a couple of these projects before, and thus physically going, and I've been, we've been a part with Mr. Zoner, Mr. Azar couldn't be here tonight due to death in the family, of these projects before, but they got a permit today, they've installed, basically they've installed the five classrooms that will now be in the library, and the six offices in the back. They need, now that we have the electrical inspection approved, they're going to fill in the rest of the concrete with the electrical receptacles, that will be better for electronics with more accessible, would be through the flexible seating and things like that. Then they will, the flooring is in, they will, they should have the flooring in by the end of the week, then they will just need to paint, or they're painting now, they usually work from the top down, and other than that, we...
Ceilings.
The ceilings, and the thing, the only things, a lot of the new furniture is in, the only things on back order from my recollection, and at the September 11th meeting, if there's, I'll have someone come speak more articulately to this from the company or the, Mr. Zoner from the facilities department, some furniture is mid-October is what we're getting. Doors, doors for the six offices and five classrooms are the second week of September, and there was one other thing.
Fully yours.
And then the five classrooms, it's really like one huge room, that could be three classrooms, and one huge room that could be two classrooms, there's a, they've installed the...
Tracks.
The tracks, the runners, but the actual retractable partitions themselves are also, I believe, October. But, the school should be able to open with the library open, if it's just finished painting on the floors and the electricals, so, but just next summer, we would do our final, because there's, you know, ran out of money, the goal would, next summer would be the final round of purchasing furniture, because the one new furniture not purchased is tables and chairs like this, that has the old maroon still, so we're going to have to endure that for this year, and then next summer, that final furniture should be purchased, so we're optimistic that Principal Bottomley by next week, I'm thinking maybe more a week into school is when it will officially be open to students, which is, and then furniture and some doors by October. But it's coming along, if anyone wants to visit, I can walk through with you, but they're going to get a lot done in the next week. One other thing underneath my superintendent's update, superintendent's entry plan and next steps, we did talk about this at the retreat, it is in your packet, so I won't spend too much more time talking about it, but I will post to the website and share with the community just a four-page superintendent's entry plan, which is, I'm in phase one now for these first three months, which is essentially listening and learning. The next three months, the second part of the plan is to, you know, look at all documents, plan the budget, analyze and engage, and the final lead and strategize with the goal that I will publish, an eight to 10 page report about what I find and learn about the district, you know, later in March or April, that will be around budget season as well, as we're going to create a new district's strategic plan for the 24, 25 school year and beyond, so I just wanted to, you know, give one final, if any committee members have questions or feedback for me before I publish that, I'd ask you to do so within the next week or so.
Questions, comments?
I have read it, and I think it's a strong entry plan, thank you so much. I, in fact, I look forward to reading what you wrote.
Yep.
No. Salwa.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I'm meeting with a lot of people, town administrators, police chiefs, and just learning a lot about the three towns and the district, a lot of the historical stuff, and each day I'm learning more, and that's helpful for me to move the district forward as well.
So, as you, with three towns, you want any one of us to meet with you in Plundale, for instance, I might know a few people, so, you know, reach out to any one of us.
Yep, thank you, I'll continue to meet with you each monthly or bi-monthly, I met with the Plundale town administrator two weeks ago, that's great, she had a lot of information.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any unfinished business, I don't have, anyone? We do have a couple of items that we wanted to talk about, we wanted to, we have one action item, why don't I turn that over to you?
Sure, yep. So, again, Mr. Azar couldn't be here tonight, this was left over from the last school year, but he did reiterate, it was discussed with the school committee last winter, just about small increases to substitute pay rates for this school year, we wanted to get this approved in time before school started. The proposed amounts have already been built into the budget, and the committee previously expressed support for doing so, so we would just need an official motion and a vote, and in the packet there is a memo, it's, it's about $5. It's, it's about $5 in each category to raise the day-to-day permanent substitute teacher pay. And the nurse sub is a $25 increase. So I'd ask for your support.
Any questions? Anyone carry, make a motion?
So we'll say that this is a difference between the budget and what we approved. Seems like we, finance department should at least be informed about this before we go forward. But anyway, I'm okay with this.
Actually, we were. We were informed that it was brought up prior to the end of the school year and was deferred to this committee because we were, that was in that meeting. So it was discussed.
Okay.
Because he closed this last year. We didn't implement it, we didn't vote on it, and we deferred it to this meeting and it was discussed.
Okay, so no, no problem.
Okay.
I have no, I have no problem.
Is that something we found?
We have a motion, can I have a second?
Yeah, I can.
Mark, do you have a question?
I have a question, yes, to make sure. So with something like this, it was, is it already baked in the budget?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Sure. We just didn't.
The new budget reflected the proposed rate.
All right.
Yeah. Apologies. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so my other thing, I didn't officially have my superintendent's update, but as we print out, handouts. Also, just following up from our retreat, a couple of you had asked about the DESI grant that was not funded, which part of it went towards the DEI director position, which is no longer funded or in place for the school year. So with the help of others in the district, I want to thank Dr. Pearl. She, for that one particular grant, it had different codes or names, but essentially it was students' behavioral mental health among this grant. So what I'm passing out now, which was gathered for you, is the history of the grant since 2019 to 2020. So I just wanted to share with you so you can see what it went towards each year, the monies. And it, I did confirm, it's double-sided. So on the back, I did confirm for this year FY '24, the grant was not offered by DESI for any districts who had received it previously. So I'm passing this out to you now. If you have any questions, please let me know and I can follow up. But this is the history of that grant, which went towards me in that position. And the other thing, just as an aside, which I had communicated about at the retreat, just through the high school and the athletic director, I had communicated to you about the miscommunication with sports and how that was having an impact on high school sports teams for the playoff divisions for this year and next year. So what I was able to do through the athletic director is find out every single sport, which sport it could have had an impact on. And on this table, it says, sports that every team played in the '22, '23 school year, divisions for the playoffs, D1, D2. The division we will play in for this school year for each sport, '23, '24. And then based on that enrollment error, the third column is the division that we should have played in for the '23, '24 division. So where I have a star is where you can see where there was a difference in essentially what, based on enrollment, we should have played in, but what we're playing in now. And as a reminder, we have appealed that to the MIAA. They have said no thus far, but we're continuing to play that out. But this chart shows to you with a star next to it, the different sports that had an impact on. In most cases, teams stayed in the same division. In a few cases, they did go to a higher division. So if anyone, and it's, if anyone, I know there's between that and the grant document I passed out, if there's info you still need to digest, feel free to, you know, let me know through email or phone call and I can try to explain it as best I can. But this came through the high school and through the athletic director. When I asked him to go sport by sport and then impact of what it had. So, sorry, that concludes, that concludes the superintendent's update.
So as we read this. See X's and stars. This is the star that I'm looking for, not the X's.
So if we go one at a time, let's just do the fall, for example. So there are five impacted in the fall. So the first one with the star next to it is field hockey. Last year, they played in D1. The division they're going to play in this year is, this is again just playoffs, is D1. But it should have been D2 for this year based on the enrollment for, for field hockey. So they're staying in the same division, but just noting the mistake is that they should have been in Division 2 this year based on the enrollment. Football played in D2 last year. They will play in D2 again this year, but a similar mistake where based on the enrollment, it should have been D3. Boys soccer, D1 last year, D1 this year, but based on the changes in MIAA, should have been D2. Girls soccer, same thing. And then girls volleyball was in D2 last year. They'll be in D1 this year, but it should have been D2. Those playoffs. And if you just go, then there's three in the winter and eight in the spring that have a similar mistake. And, you know, that's, I just wanted to explain that as I learn more about it. It really, in most cases, is the same as last year, but based on MIAA's redoing the playoff divisions based on enrollment, in some, in a number of cases, I think we should have gone down a division. That's what I learned.
Thanks. Our kids are so good, we could tell.
That's right. That's right.
We will win.
No matter what.
All right, so that concludes the report. I'm happy to answer any questions afterwards.
Anyway. We did want to include the, we have the action, we've taken that. We did want to include the school committee goals and just have a brief discussion. Dr. Verlay is going to add his goals for us in the September 11th meeting. And obviously, I think our goals should be rather consistent with Dr. Verlay's goals. So we want to give this out to you. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at them. We can talk about it this evening if you'd like, or if you want to just provide that information to Dr. Verlay directly in terms of your views of our current goals, any changes or recommendations you might have. And then in our workshop, we had a, I think a great suggestion, and Mark has followed up with some work on that. We agreed that we were going to redo the superintendent's evaluation form. And we had a subcommittee that had been on the books for some time that we really didn't even know was there, or what it did and how we do it. So that committee now has a challenge to come up with, let's call it a best practice kind of evaluation form as opposed to the one you've been using for some time. And it was suggested by Mark that this should in fact be one of our goals. So I think if there's any objection to that, we'd like to focus on that being one of our goals as well this year. We're not creating, this is all conversation this evening, it's not an action item. But what is, what's the committee's thoughts?
Can I clarify one?
By all means.
Thank you for adding this so quickly. Appreciate that. Some of us have been through the evaluation process more than one time. Some, it'll be new for the first time. My experience was, which had nothing to do with the prior superintendent and has nothing to do with the current superintendent, but simply with the process, was that it was very hard to do what I thought was my job, which was to evaluate the effectiveness of the superintendent based on the way the process was designed and the tools that were used. For example, it asked a lot of questions about things I had no idea. And so I actually left most of the evaluation blank. And that didn't feel like I was doing my job. So what I am recommending, or what I am putting out the table, I guess, for discussion, is that the committee, the subcommittee, spend some time looking at what is the current process, what are alternatives to the process, and build something that works for the school committee and for the superintendent. Because it's a great time to fix it with a new superintendent coming in and building something that works for everybody. And so to be clear, Jim, I'm not, my proposal isn't about the form. It's about the process. So maybe the form will get changed, maybe it won't. There's many pieces to the process and I think we have the right to create our own process. There is nothing that says you must have a very, this process that's laid out. You're allowed to create revisions to it. So that's what I was proposing. I think everyone is better served. The superintendent is better served because he will get that real feedback, not made-up feedback. And we would be doing our job to like say, we know how a superintendent's doing and can, can talk about it intelligently, which I did not feel intelligent about last year.
Why?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I agree 100% with Mark.
Same.
I think we need to revise this and, and figure out how to properly evaluate our new superintendent fairly because I have the same concerns that you have.
I think you should, you're the only one that I think has not done, you have, yeah, okay. I think a couple of, I would share the opinion that both Mark and Bruce have endorsed. Some of the questions are absolutely irrelevant to what our goal is and some of the questions are impossible for us to answer. We're not here on day-to-day operations, or should we be? And we're not responsible for day-to-day operations. We certainly have feedback on it through parents and students or whatever, but that's not our job. So I totally endorse this as well. And I do think it should be a goal that we get this done and that we get it in place and that it's a collaborative way with the superintendent. Your report will be liable to this because you can help us frame what you think is important for us to know. Because a lot of the information that was in that review is information that isn't important for us to know. So I think it's great. I've forgotten who the three are, who will, who's on that committee?
I have, so I guess that would be my only question too, is Mr. Harmon, Mr. Cates, and Screeney. So should I work through the three of them and then they can report at committee meetings? Is that, I do think the, I've been through this formally in previous districts. So I do know as a group, you would vote on, give feedback, approve my goals. So I'll have my goals, like Mr. Lan said, at the next meeting for the, for the whole committee. But then kind of from there, working on what to submit and all the details, artifacts, evidence, I could submit and everything, I'll go through the subcommittee, if that makes sense. And then you would do, through the subcommittee, they keep you updated and then do the annual review at the end of the year.
So it's me, the Screeney, and who?
Yeah, Mr. Harmon, who's not here today. Mr. Harmon, Mr. Cates, and Screeney for the subcommittee.
Could we invite more?
Yeah, so these are open, they'll be open. I.
They're, they're, you attend any meeting. There's not, there's no public input or conversation. One meeting's wrong.
It's not a quorum. Yeah, as long as there weren't five.
I, if the committee wishes to, as long as you keep it to four.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I have to invite Mark to the committee if he would like to.
If you will have me attend.
Sure.
Yeah.
We will not, we will not ask for a formal vote. Yeah, I think that's great.
And for those laughing, it's because.
Could I also add too, for the committee, the subcommittee that we're looking at this, to be looking at the timeline, because we had discussed that at the retreat. And it just seems silly to me that we're going to do an evaluation later after maybe a half second the committee isn't here, you could have new people.
Yeah. So I could do an abbreviated version. So you could actually do the evaluation early. So instead of the end of the school year, you could do it in March before the new school committee elections. That would actually be preferred because then the people who I've been working with more closely are doing the actual evaluation. So otherwise, there could be new members who I haven't had a chance to work with, only worked with for a month or two, that would be doing the evaluation. So we could kind of, through the subcommittee, speed it up or streamline it.
Yeah, we do that thing though, was it like before? Yeah, we can hear that. Do you have to change like basically your timeline of when you're submitting things? That you have to put here for that if you decide.
We talked about that at the workshop and it's something I think the committee needs to kind of work its way through because it's totally unfair for, especially the three appointees or even election, you folks. Our election's in May, yours is in April.
We're a month before.
We're a month before. So you could have as many as six new members on this committee in April of that year with one and a half months of working with the superintendent. That is not a fair evaluation. So you've got to think through how was the appropriate way to do that. And, and part of the problem was, I think that, you know, if you do it too early, you don't have any meaningful feedback, especially with the new superintendent. You've got to have some time in both to your benefit and to ours. So it'll be fun for you folks to work through this. Maybe something else.
Can I just say one course? I just want to say, and I, I'm honest, I don't know whether you prefer it, we address it by Dr. Verlay in these settings or by Rich. Do you have a preference?
So it's up to you, my name's Rich. I say to the, no, I say, if staff ask, I'd say, in front of students, it's Dr. Verlay. But if not in front of students, it's, it's Rich.
So, so for me, it's Dr. Verlay in this setting. If I'm, one on one, it's, hey, Rich.
I would just recognize, I think you've already shared some things about process that is significantly different than what we've done in the past, mentioning artifacts and thinking about how to show and represent what we're doing. So I just want, I feel like we're ahead of it already and thinking about timeline. Both of these things were not, we had no clue about these things at this point during the year. So just want to acknowledge, it feels already better.
Thank you. Sure. Then something I'm comfortable with because I've used it formally in wherever I've worked. So something I'm used to and with the leadership team will use this in my process. This is what process the teachers go through at their principals as well. So.
Thanks, Peter.
Does anyone have any comments on the goals they'd like to share this evening? Or should, would the feedback be sufficient? Your pleasure. What's our feedback? Are there any, I don't know of any reports from either subcommittees. Although we're going to look forward to a couple pretty soon. Any that I have missed?
None.
All right. Well, fun part, now we get to hear from the local school committees. Ms. Winnie is not with us this evening, so Ms. Shump, you are off.
Okay, we had our last meeting August 3rd. And at that meeting, we discussed, as you brought up, that all the meals would be free for the school year. We are also, the next meeting, going to be looking, getting a report from the special ed director on the ES5 program that was very successful this summer. The Jackson Playground is under construction right now. It was kind of, needed some TLC and some safety concerns. So that would be ready for the students at the end of October. Today was the first day for teachers. They have professional development today. Tomorrow, from 11:30 to 1:00, it's a K to 6 open house for students. Parents want to come and see their classrooms prior. There's also a 12 to 1 event for popsicles with the principal. And that is at the, I believe, at the Jackson School. And then we also looked at the PTO. We approved the fundraisers for that. There is no school this Friday, but the first school day is on Wednesday. And the kindergarten had their orientation and then they got the famous bus ride around town. So I don't know if they can see, oh, they got their bus ride. And, and kindergarten has their first school day, not on the Wednesday, on Thursday, the 31st.
What is the famous bus ride?
Yeah, the famous bus ride, they take them and they bring them around the town and show them.
So kindergarten go on the bus ride for the first time.
For the first time.
And I think parents get to go.
Yes, they do, yes. That would be something for the bus ride.
Yeah. So it was their first time on the bus ride so that we know what's.
What's expected and how they're to say. And then not having that anxiety of, you know, just big yellow thing taking you away and we're just taking it. So. know, this big yellow thing taking you away and what's it taking me to?
Different, different than the students, our teachers, our new teachers are going to be taken on the bus ride from three different communities by our assistant principal at the high school.
A shout out to Mr. Lewis at the high school, he's gonna be the tour guide. Three times.
That's fun. So that's pretty much it, just get ready.
Thank you very much. Any questions, anyone? Greeney, you are off.
I have a very similar report. So tomorrow is the meet and greet. So the students, the Roderick meets from 9:15 to 10:00 and Delaney from 10:15 to 11:00. They go in and meet their teachers, drop all their supplies. And then the PTO hosts a shaved ice truck this year at the Bus Circle in between and during the second event. And then they also have the bus orientation our morning, always very exciting. Then they start school on Wednesday.
Where is the spread?
Thank you.
So Robert, anything to do with the, what the kids?
I don't know. I do, no weight communications. Anyone that way? No subcommittee reports this evening? Any school committee members have any questions, anything they'd like to discuss, open forum? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for being part of the school year.